Wake up. This is the way we do it. We've got to wait for the thumbs up to make sure. Are you good? Okay. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the NAGS Head Planning Board meeting, Tuesday, August 19th. This is our call to order, and our first order of business will be actually to amend our agenda to include a presentation. We're lucky enough today to have Attorney Lauren Womble with us. She's going to give us a presentation about how our board operates and some ethical issues and those sorts of things. So, thank you, Lauren, and we will need to amend the agenda, please, to include her presentation. She's going to go right after public comments. So, do I have a motion to amend the agenda, please?
Sure, you can. I will make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay. The agenda is amended, and we'll move on to public comment and audience response. Is there anybody with us today that wants to speak during public comment? Okay, great. We'll close that section of the meeting then and move on to the approval of our minutes from July 15th.
Can I make a motion to approve them?
We have a motion to approve the minutes of our July 15th meeting and a second.
Second.
All in favor? Great. Moving on then.
One of them needs to owe the other one a Coke.
Good morning again.
Good morning, good morning. Just a second here to get this situated. So Kelly asked me, did I have anything I wanted to project up on the screen? And I said, no, because it's all code, town code, and general statutes, and I don't know that you guys just want to read along with me. So, I'm going to give you an overview about the planning board and how the planning board is supposed to operate, your duties and obligations, and then we can, if you have some questions, please interrupt me, or we'll have some time at the end. I know Kelly kind of gave me a little bit of a time window, but feel free to interrupt me if you have a question about the specific item I'm talking about. So first, I want to lead with, North Carolina General Statute 160D 301 sets forth the duties and responsibilities of the planning board. This is codified in Town Code, Section 2.4.4. And the planning board is supposed to prepare, review, maintain, monitor, and periodically update, and recommend to the governing board a comprehensive plan and other plans deemed appropriate and to conduct ongoing related research, data collection, mapping, and analysis. As you know, the planning board is an advisory board, so you guys aren't necessarily making the final decision about any development matter, but you are going to review in depth all things related to development and make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. You're going to make recommendations about policies and ordinances. You're to facilitate community and citizen involvement in reviewing anything related to development, and zoning amendments, map amendments. You're going to review and comment on those. And then, there's kind of this catch-all. Anything else the board decides to give you to review, right? And so, that can be many different things. There may be some research that the Board of Commissioners wants the planning board to look into and gather some citizen involvement regarding upcoming development in the area or making some modifications. What interest is there in modifying certain areas of the zoning ordinance? So, there's many different functions you can play, but primarily, it's advisory to the Board of Commissioners. So, Section 2.1.3 of our UDO is a little even more specific about what your role is within the town in NAGS Head. And specifically, as it relates to reviewing site plans, major site plans, special use applications, and vested rate applications. And so, we're going to talk a little bit about, more about those specific things. But first, I want to talk about that comprehensive land use plan and your involvement in that and why that's so important. So, as you're aware, every municipality, town, county is required by statute to have a comprehensive land use plan, right? This is kind of your guiding principles towards development and regulating development in the community. And this plan spans over a number of years. It's for future planning. It's supposed to help guide text amendments, map amendments, and things of that nature so that the town is moving towards those long-term goals. So, if you haven't been through a review of the land use or comprehensive plan yet, I know there's a couple new members, that plan is extensive. It requires a lot of public input, a lot of public hearing, and it's really important because it is kind of that guiding star about where the future of the town is going. And so, in order, by statute, you know, what's the timing of that? How frequently are you going to do that? You may sit on a board, a term for a planning board or two, and never have to do a full comprehensive plan update. It really depends on how rapidly development is occurring in the town. And I would say that it's usually somewhere between five and 10 years unless your board, the Board of Commissioners decides to review it more frequently. It's usually about every five to 10 years, you have this big comprehensive review and update of the plan. So, just kind of tuck that away. The plan is important because when you get to reviewing text amendments and map amendments, by statute, you are required to include in your recommendation a plan consistency statement, right? So, again, back to, the comprehensive plan is your guiding star. When you review a text amendment or a map amendment, part of your recommendation, the Board of Commissioners has to be, is this amendment consistent with the plan, right? And so, luckily here in NAGS Head, you guys have great staff who's going to give you a fantastic report and tell you why it is or isn't consistent with the plan. But I would encourage you to spend some time reviewing the plan. When you get an application, review it and take the plan with it and kind of review them in conjunction. Now, what I will say is, the plan is long, it's detailed, it's extensive. If you have questions, call Kelly. But you always want to use that kind of as your filter when you're reviewing those amendments because that's what we're supposed to be following. In regards to timing and for text amendments, so, you are always going to have the opportunity to, and by statute required, to review text and map amendments first. So, question is, how can text amendments be initiated in the town in NAGS Head? They can be initiated by a motion by the Board of Commissioners, a motion by the planning board, or by a person within the zoning jurisdiction of the town. So, these applications can come from these three different areas. I think the board, your board's probably familiar with these text amendment requests. Sometimes you'll have a recommendation from staff. I think the board should undertake this text amendment and consider this. Sometimes that staff recommendation goes to the Board of Commissioners. Board Commissioners says, yes, proceed with that text or map amendment, and let's work it through the process. However that text or map amendment begins, it's always going to filter through the planning board first. So, when that application comes through, the board has 30 days to review and provide its comment to the Board of Commissioners. Now, if you don't act or make a recommendation within 30 days, the Board of Commissioners can proceed to consider the text or map amendment without a recommendation from the board. What I will say is, while that can occur, and I have seen it occur, Board of Commissioners usually really wants to hear what the planning board has to say, and if there's some reason why a recommendation hasn't come through in 30 days, or there's, you know, it's a lengthy, extensive review, consistently, I would say, the Board of Commissioner will wait to have something from the planning board. This is, you know, we talked earlier about you're an advisory board. Part of your role is to engage the community and citizen input, and this is one of those areas, text and map amendments, where planning board review is really important for a number of reasons. One, I will say, public involvement. So, usually, and the planning board's probably familiar, public involvement, when it comes to text amendments and map amendments, is always after they're adopted and the impacts hit the street and citizens are angry, right? And they're like, what did you do and why did you do this? And the town's always like, we had five meetings about it, and we talked about it, and it was in the newspaper, and it was on the website, right? And so, planning board review is just another opportunity for the public and citizens to be engaged, right? You all touch numerous people in your daily lives and your professions, and so, that just gives another opportunity to engage the communities even more. You know, you can have community meetings and do different things that will engage the community some more on these text and map amendments because they have a direct impact on our citizens, and often, they don't realize that they are occurring until after they have happened. And so, that's one primary reason why planning board review is really important. The other is, you weren't appointed to this board by accident, okay? You all have varied backgrounds, varied professions, varied histories in the area, long-term, short-term. And so, your insight and review offers another perspective to staff, to the Board of Commissioners, about an application, a text amendment or a map amendment. So, your review is, I would say, vital to the process. That's clear because it's ordered by statute, but I think that just the impact, as we see it imposed here in NAGS Head, is really important. So, just keep that in mind when you are reviewing those items. A few tips when you're making a recommendation. So, sometimes you will see that the planning board's recommendation is the opposite of what the Board of Commissioners does, right? Your recommendation's not binding on the board, but like I said, I do think it is valued and very important. And so, in that vein, I would say, when you are doing a review and you're making your recommendation, spend some time, talk in your deliberations, talking about the reasons for your decisions, right? So, the board, your minutes are made available for the board, your minutes are made available to the community. And so, I think it's important for them to see your reasoning behind, we recommend approval or disapproval. We recommend this change or this modification to this amendment. So, those things are helpful to the board to hear why you're making your certain recommendations.
Can I jump in here for just one quick second?
Yes, please.
There may be a time towards the end when you're talking about this subject, but not long ago, you made remarks about, you know, just public input. We're out in the community, and we're a varied group, and you know, you do have people talking to you. What's the guidance on, you know, I've had people actually approach me and want me to come look at something that we're getting ready to look at or something like that, or, you know? And so, it gets a little, you know, it's one thing, and we all talk to a lot of people in our community, that's why we're here. But what's the guidance on that as far as, you know, I didn't, in this one particular situation, go out to the site of a person who was, had applied for a text amendment, but, because I just didn't think, you know, and I realize we're not a decision-making board, but still, is that a situation we should get in where we're talking directly to an applicant prior to a?
So, what I will, I think that is, there's two parts to that. One is a political decision, the other is a legal decision. Politically, I would say that's in your discretion. Legally, I would also say it's in your discretion because of your function as the board. So, the planning board is going to hear and review applications, and they are all going to be legislative decisions. So, contrast that to the Board of Adjustment or the Board of Commissioners, who are maybe the final decision-making stop, if you will. The quasi-judicial procedure requires that there not be ex parte communications. That includes also ex parte information gathering. Quasi-judicial means that the board is sitting as the judge, which means you can only consider the competent evidence that's presented to you during the hearing, okay? So, contrast that to legislative, which is, the board can make a decision. I always kind of use this as an example for clients. Sometimes I'm like, it's legislative, which means if somebody walks in in a purple shirt, and I don't like purple, I can just say, no, I don't think so, not today, right? Okay? Legislative is, it's a political decision. It's in your discretion. Do you agree with it? Do you not agree with it? Your personal feelings about, or, you know, concerns of your citizens can play a role in legislative decisions, right? Quasi-judicial, you're sitting as an impartial decision-maker, as a judge, right? So, you can't let outside influences make the determination. You have to be driven by the standards and the code. So, if you, sitting as the planning board, are approached by a citizen or an applicant who says, hey, this is coming before you, I really want you to come check out this site or, you know, the subdivision or whatever, I want to talk to you about this issue, which you might get more frequently than anything else, you can do that. What I will say is, then you are armed with information that maybe the rest of the board does not have. And so, in those circumstances, if you are going to engage or talk with a community member or something about it, then you need to be able to share that with the rest of the board, right? Or, or encourage that citizen applicant to say, come to the planning board meeting. You know, I'm only one of the board members. My entire board would benefit from this information, you know? Please come to the board, share this information. We all need to know it. So, you're not going to break any rules or derail a application by talking to somebody or anything like that. What I will say is, best practices is to make sure the entire board, you know, has the opportunity to know or learn that information, encourage the citizens to also reach out.
Really good question.
Thank you.
So, other items the planning board does, other than text amendments, comprehensive land use plan, and this is really in regards to site development, right? So, major site plans, preliminary plots, vested right site plans, subdivision waivers, and special use permits, which really falls into that major site plan category. I really want to spend time on the special use permit, so just preliminarily, let me just say, preliminary plots, vested right site plans, and subdivision waivers. Well, first, let me say subdivision waivers. Wow, I was preparing for this today, and I was like, subdivision waivers. You learn something new every day. I don't think I've ever had that issue come up here in NAGS Head before. Very rare. So, I do want to mention them because they are rare. But the, some, a citizen can apply to have a waiver for a subdivision. These are really rare and due to really unique situations where maybe something could not qualify, they can ask for a waiver. And that would first start with this board giving a review, and then it would have to go to the Board of Commissioners, and it would have to be by a supermajority decision by the Commissioners. So, that's just a really unique thing I want to share with you guys, mostly because I just learned it, so. But of course, the vested right plans, preliminary plots, you guys, I'm sure, have touched those multiple times. Those will come through. What I will say about anything that you are going to review, anything that comes before you, is let the UDO be your guiding star, okay? And the comprehensive plan. So, when you are reviewing these things, you want to focus in on what are the standards in the ordinance, and does this meet the standards, right? And if it does or doesn't, and go from there. That's really what you have to follow. So, and again, staff's going to give you a fantastic report and give you all the details you need, so just use the ordinance as your guidance for those reviews. All right, so special use permits. So, this is probably one of the more hotly contested issues or areas, lively areas within planning board review. You can find this in the UDO under 3.8.3. So, talking about review of special use permits, so just if you ever wanted to go review that, just know it's in there. So, generally speaking, when you are reviewing an application for a special use permit, if the use is permitted in the zoning district, you are not considering whether you like the use or not, okay? You're only considering whether it meets the standards in the ordinance, okay? And that's often a real hard position to be in, harder for the Board of Commissioners because they have to make the decision, but it's still really hard for the planning board because you have to send a recommendation. And so, sometimes when you receive an application for a special use permit, you have that citizen board rub, which is, citizens are going, oh my gosh, I cannot believe this use is permitted in the zoning district. It's 25 yards from my house, and now I'm going to have a hotel in my backyard or whatever, right? And so, that's where that rub comes in, and again, we're not, you are not looking at whether you like the use or don't like the use. You are considering only if it's a permitted use in the zoning district, and if it is, then you are looking at the design standards within the ordinance. You have to consider that. Now, our ordinance, and by general statute, you can, specifically 3.8.3.1, the planning board may, in its review, suggest reasonable conditions to the location, nature, and extent of the proposed use, and its relationship to the surrounding properties, parking areas, driveways, pedestrians, vehicular circulation systems, screening, landscaping, timing of development, and any other conditions the planning board may find appropriate. So, this is, that sounds really, really broad and sounds really, really fantastic, like, great, I can put any condition I want to on this, or recommend any condition I want to on a special use permit. But it's not quite that easy. Any condition or recommended condition that comes from this board or a condition that's adopted by the decision-making board has to be related to standards within the ordinance. So, it all has to tie back to those standards in the ordinance. Frequently, you'll see, and you've seen it before, in applications that've come through, staff report says, staff's recommending approval or disapproval, or approval, subject to these conditions. And there's a list of conditions. Generally, the applicant's already reviewed and agreed to them, but here they are. In addition to those, if you think that there may be another condition necessary or appropriate, you can also recommend those. Again, your recommendation is not binding on the Board of Commissioners, okay? So, time limitation. We talked earlier about text amendment, maps amendments, and that the board has 30 days. For special use permit review, you have 45 days before the Board of Commissioners can take this special use permit under review. Again, I would say the same principles apply, that the Board of Commissioners really wants to hear what you have to say, really wants your input from the review. So, there are situations where I've seen applications take longer than 45 days. It may take two meetings, right? And if you're meeting once a month, that's not going to be 45 days. And just depending on the size of the project, the amount of public involvement, so just note that. So, your recommendation for legislative decisions, the text amendments, the map amendments to the Board of Commissioners, while not binding, the board can say, you know what? The planning board decided, recommended, we not approve, we're going to go with the planning board's recommendation, right? Well, that's different when you're talking about special use permits, because special use permits are quasi-judicial procedure. The Board of Commissioners cannot rely on your recommendation for their decision as it relates to a special use permit. And so, sometimes you'll hear, there's specific, in 160D, it says that the board cannot rely on the planning board's recommendation. Our ordinance says that the planning board's recommendation shall be considered and shall be made part of the record. So, we kind of have this rub where it feels like it doesn't really mesh, but it does because, again, you're an advisory board. And so, what it does is, is it permits the Board of Commissioners or staff. I've seen staff's report update following the planning board meeting, saying, you know, this came up during the planning board review, staff went and took another look at this issue, and based on that, we recommend this. It may raise issues where the board can ask the applicant additional questions. The key is, is that the decision-making board with their hat on as the judge has to keep your recommendation as information available. They can't say, you know, we want this condition because the planning board wants this condition without any other basis. So, that's where it's a little bit different there in regards to special use permits and text amendments. The last two things I want to cover before I open the floor for questions, if there are any, are really more general. So, conflicts of interest, this is one of the areas that Kelly asked, I touch on. So, appointed board members shall not vote on advisory or legislative decisions, which is everything that you guys do. Regarding development, where the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on the member. In addition, if there is a person who the member has a close familial business or other associational In addition, if there is a person who the member has a close familial business or other associational relationship. So, that's a lot. So let's talk about it. The money one's really easy, right? If you're gonna have a financial benefit of, in some form or fashion, uh, be it direct in your pocket or something like that, and you are, your decision is driven by any sort of financial gain or benefit, um, you should not participate in the consideration and vote. Um, in terms of family, business, or associational relationship, family's really easy, right, to delineate. Business is really easy to delineate. Associational relationship, what does that mean? Well, what I will tell you is it's not defined, like a lot of really good things in the law. It's the gray area. So, um, I think that just means, does it pass the sniff test, okay? If there's an associational relationship, are you the, um, uh, on the, let's see, the, the PTA with your, um, neighbor and you guys are best friends and you spend every weekend at the beach together, right? Does it pass the sniff test? Are you going to be able to be a fair and impartial decision-maker, right? The whole point of avoiding conflict of interest is that your recommendation, your vote, is supposed to be impartial, right? And to the degree that your personal involvement with this individual or the applicant is not going to sway your decision. Um, so what do you do if that happens? Or you think you might have a conflict, or you're not really sure because maybe it falls in the gray area, right? Um, or maybe it's your third cousin by marriage who's applied for this, you know, I guess technically it's family, what do we do? Um, first thing you do is call Kelly. Um, and then she's gonna reach out to, um, whoever, whoever's serving as your attorney for that week. Um, we will work, we will can, reach out to you, we will talk about it, we'll work through it, and we'll give you our advice of whether or not there's a conflict. And so, just know that if that comes up, best thing you can do is reach out. If you have any questions, sometimes we have folks reach out and we're like, "No, no, no, you're fine. Don't even worry about it," you know? Or sometimes it takes a little more information gathering. Um, and ultimately, if you do have a conflict, then, um, you'll recuse yourself from participa- participating in that. Let the board know. Um, it, you know, people, board members can be challenged for conflicts of interest. Um, that procedure is that someone from the board makes the motion, or an applicant makes the motion, and then the board votes on that. Again, that's really rare. Usually it's clear and then board member says, "Yes, I do," or "No, I don't." And then we kinda flesh that out too. So just let us know and we'll work through those. Uh, the last thing I wanna cover is public records, public records requests, and your public email. Um, so you all have assigned email addresses for the town. Um, couple cautions with that is, one, we are subject to open meetings laws, which means if you are all emailing on a reply all and saying, "I think I'm gonna vote this way," you are having a meeting by email, okay? You cannot do that. Um, you should, you'll get mass emails from staff that says, "Here's the agenda packet," or "Here's this," or "Here's an announcement," or "So-and-so sent an email and asked we distribute it to the board." Don't reply all, because if you do, we'll be in violation of open meetings laws. Um, the other thing about your email is, um, they are subject to public records requests, okay? So be mindful of that when you're engaging on your email. I mean, anything that you send on that email can be subject to a public records request. What I will also say is public records requests can extend to your personal items and meaning a personal email address. If you've got a Gmail or something like that, if you are conducting public business, it can be subject to a public records request. So, um, those are kinda my cautionary tales at the end in terms of conflicts and public records. Um, and just my overview. I'd be happy to cover anything else if I miss anything, um, and answer any questions.
Got a question?
Yes.
Um, I get, I am, my planning board emails are included on my personal email and I, it's easier for me to respond or check my personal email. Should I be more habitual about checking my town email instead of my personal email? Like, should I, should I conduct any business with my personal email, or should I do only with my town email?
So what I will say is best practice is to use your town email. Um, I mean, this is a practically a volunteer position, so we certainly don't wanna run anybody off by saying you can only use your town email. What I will say is it's not a problem till it is a problem, and that is when there's a public records request. Public records requests, a town email, town staff can issue a request to IT. Please go capture all these emails. Here's the search terms for it. Go get them all. If you are not using your town email, then you're gonna get an email from Kelly that says, um, "Please go through your personal email and find each and every email for the last three years that uses the word 'planning board.'" Okay? And then ten hours later, you may be like, "I wish I had used the town email," okay? So it's not, as long as the information is available, you can't delete it, things like that. You can use your personal email. But it's probably not gonna be worth it in the end, and so that's the, you know, best practice, use the town email, but it's not a violation per se.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Anybody else have questions?
I have one more thing.
Yes.
If we're standing in the parking lot talking about planning board things, how many people can be in the group?
Well, you can't have a quorum.
That never happens.
Okay?
Till eleven.
So you can't have a quorum. So quorum is, uh, the, let's see, you have seven. Seven, so more than half, so five, four, five, four.
Can't have more than three.
Yep. Can't have more than three.
Not that we do that, I mean.
So carpooling is out.
Well, you know, carpool, you can certainly carpool. I mean, you guys might be in the same location. You know, it just depends on if you're conducting town business or not. And the thing is about being together or being in, you know, kind of, unless you guys are already an intact group of seven who socialize regularly, which generally is not the case. If you are all in one location, the majority of you are all in one location, that's gonna raise red flags, right? And so whether you're conducting formal town business or not, it makes the community question, wonder. Part of this is being transparent. Um, you hear that a lot. We wanna be transparent with citizens. We want applicants and, um, and citizens to feel like they can come before the board and, and, and have a kind of a fair shake of the process where there's not this like backdoor dealing. And that's really the thing. So, um, I, so I represent Choctaw County Board of Commissioners and, um, they will occasionally, uh, like the ag center will want to host them for dinner because the kids have learned to cook something, and so they're putting on a dinner for the board of commissioners. And the board's not gonna conduct any business, but we always send out a notice that says, "Hey, the board of commissioners are all gonna be in one location. Don't panic. They're just eating dinner," okay? And so if you are gonna be in a location like that, there's gonna be something going on. Sometimes staff will kinda send that notice out. Um, but you, you wanna avoid it, you wanna avoid being the majority in one location. You don't wanna quorum to discuss town business.
Who does that notice go to? The public?
The public.
Okay.
It does. I mean, it doesn't say, "Don't panic," but that's the message, right?
I figured that.
It's just posted like where the meeting notices are online. Um, so people know, okay, the board's getting together and, and then you get some citizens who are convinced they're gonna be conducting business and will go just to see. Um, so you know, it just depends. But it does give some of that air of transparency that we're not, we're not doing things behind closed doors, so.
I have, I have a, a question.
Sure.
If a situation comes to light where, um, a decision was made and there, and there may have been a conflict of interest, is there, is, does it mitigate the, the decision directly or indirectly? Or is that, is that purely a legal course of action?
So, um, I would say it depends. Um, a, there are very strict review, um, and appeal statute of limitations as it relates to development approvals, and they range depending on the type of development approval. Um, they can be as short as thirty days, um, as long as three years. Um, so it depends on what type of decision was made. Um, but a, uh, potential conflict of interest can be challenged on appeal, okay? And so if a, let's say that an applicant comes through, special use permit, and the board of commissioners, a conflict of interest down here that may have existed that wasn't uncovered until later is not gonna be a deal breaker per se because the final decision-making board is the board of commissioners, but let's say it's the board of commissioners. And, um, after the approval or denial of the application, a conflict of interest becomes aware, they become aware of one or some sort of relationship somebody had. Um, the applicant or someone withstanding, uh, can appeal the decision. And one of the bases for the appeal can be the alleged conflict, and they can raise that with court. Um, and then the court would review from there, make a decision whether to send it back for a new review or kinda what decision they'll make from there. But if it's not challenged within the period of time, that specific statute of limitations time, it stands. Anyone else?
Anybody else have questions? I have one more regarding conflict of interest. Does the appearance of a conflict of interest ever enter into the decision?
Um.
Is she laughing at me? Uh-oh.
No, I would say no. So you know, that, 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 um, other associational relationship, you know, does it pass the sniff test? You know, sometime, there, the, who, who decides that, right? What is the sniff test? Whose standard is that? Does the appearance of a conflict matter? You know, are you, you, you live in the community, you socialize in the community, you're going to know people who come in here. You're going to know the developers, you're going to know the applicants. It may be your neighbor down the street or somebody like that. The question, so while it may appear to somebody or another citizen that there's a conflict and you shouldn't participate, the question is really, um, can, are you benefiting from it? And can you separate out your personal relationship, if you will, to a certain degree? Some are barred by statute, but can you, can you, um, leave that at the door and fulfill your role as a planning board member? And so that's kinda where those gray areas come in. Um, but ultimately, you know, if you're a board member, you have an obligation, a statutory obligation to vote. Sometimes people come in, they're like, "I'm gonna abstain." I'm like, "Well, if you abstain, that's a yes vote, by the way." Like, that's the default. And so you can't abstain. By statute, you are required to vote, um, because you have to fulfill your duty and your role. So, um, even if there's an appearance and it's uncomfortable, you still have to participate.
Down the road of abstaining, uh, can you vote present?
I'm sorry?
Can you vote present?
Uh, uh, in, in response to?
A thing. I, I'm agnostic to it. Um, I, I don't, you know, I, you know, I, I don't wanna stand for it. Um, could, could one vote present?
If you vote present, that's the same as abstaining and that's gonna be counted as a vote, as a yes vote.
I agree.
Um, so if you, if you, you have to say no, you know?
Okay.
You have to vote to disapprove.
So you must vote yes or no. There is no third option. Recuse yourself if there's a conflict.
I'm sorry?
Recuse yourself if there's a.
You would be doing that before.
Yeah, but this is what's interesting. So, and this got a little more detailed. I was, I wasn't sure, but, when you're kinda determining, um, the calculation of a vote, if you will, right? So whether someone's been, if you have a vacancy on the board, or someone's been recused, or someone's just absent. Um, all those things impact the number for majority, right? So if you are here but you don't vote because you say, uh, present or abstain or whatever, um, you're still counted in the number for the majority, right? If someone is absent and was approved to be absent in advance by the chair, um, or the board, you know, says, "Yes, we're gonna excuse them from this vote," um, they don't count in the number for the majority. If you have a vacancy, they don't, they don't count in the number of the majority. Or if someone is excluded for a conflict, they're not, they're not included in the majority. But if you try to recuse yourself without a legal basis for a conflict, you're abstaining, okay? So, you know, you have to, that's why those conflicts of interest have to kinda be fleshed out in advance so that we know how to calculate the vote. If it comes down to one, one way or the other, if you abstain or try to, "I'm, I'm not voting because I have a conflict." Well, what is the conflict? Is there a legal basis? You may still be counted as a yes.
Right.
Makes sense.
Anybody else have questions? Okay, well, great. Thank you so much. This has been very useful information for us. We appreciate you being here.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Take care. Okay, so let's move on to our action items. And the first one will be consideration of text amendment to the UDO uh, to comply with session law, which requires local governments to reduce the minimum width of standard parking space from ten feet to nine feet, length remaining at twenty. And Kelly, good morning.
Good morning. I think you just gave my entire staff report.
Okay.
Now, well, there's really not a whole lot to talk about with this. We don't really have an option. Um, it, it's now session law. We have to abide by what's been adopted here. We don't get an option, um, to do anything differently. So I did put in your staff report that, um, our ordinances have always been ten feet in width for your parking stall, uh, twenty feet in depth. You can reduce it to eighteen, um, if you have a, a wheel stop and a two-foot overhang. Um, but ten feet has always been our width and it's always served us well, being that we're predominantly, um, tourism-driven. You have a lot of people bringing their SUVs, trucks, they've got the hitch with the thing hanging off the back. They've got roof racks, they've got everything going on. And so the ten feet has always been, um, ideal for parking and also for maneuvering. Um, but unfortunately, we don't get to make that decision in this. Um, so what we've had to do is amend our, um, UDO in areas where necessary to address that, our parking standard for both commercial and residential. Where we have applied the ten-foot in width, we now have to go with nine, based upon this new legislation. So, um, the proposed text is on the screen. It would be amending table ten dash one as that relates to residential parking. Um, it doesn't affect angled parking, parallel parking, handicap parking. Um, so it's just gonna be your, um, ninety-degree parking stall width. So we can still keep our, um, wider widths when we're talking about angled parking and parallel parking. And then table ten eight, um, is what we rely on for our commercial standards. So, and I agree with everything Lauren said. I did not provide you with a list of land use policies that either agree or disagree with this because it's not an option.
Is, is there any verbiage in the, in the statute from state on, that we're kinda getting in the umbrella about access aisles, um, in association with this? And, you know, I'm thinking specifically, like ADA does have an access aisle issue where the parking space is a minimum, maximum, there's a standard.
Yeah, this does not address, this would not apply to any ADA or handicap parking.
Right, right. Well, but, but even like the federal standard is for the parking spaces X and then there's that area of accessibility around the vehicle. And, you know, my, my, my thought is, it, it, there might be some access issues in association with some parking spaces as this comes up. And I'm wondering if an access aisle might be part of the mix. Two SUVs are parked in the, in a parking space, um, and it will, can create choke points or accessibility issues, um, especially in kind of a strip mall setting, um, where people, you can't get between the cars. And oddly, you know, damage occurs. That's kinda one of those things. So I kinda wonder, in an area where there might be a, a door, a window, or I'm sorry, a door or service window that the people are accessing and there's a parking space adjacent to it, could you request for an access aisle, um, above and beyond the maximum, minimum parking lot size?
Um, so, uh, maybe a misunderstanding. So, nothing is changing with ADA.
Yes, I, I completely agree with that.
And so to go, to try to, um, deviate from what North Carolina general statute has provided would be us seeking special legislation.
Okay.
So I, I think we'll have to keep an eye on it and see how that moves forward, if that's an issue. Um, but I don't, I, I don't envision us seeking special legislation at this point.
And the other thing that I have seen is where you may have a, if you- And the other thing that I have seen is where you may have a, if you have this standard, you ask for more parking spaces. Is, you know, and that, that's what Kill Devil Hills does, does as an example. Are they gonna have to, to do that? Are they gonna have to amend their standard just to generally not have that? We suggest ten feet, but if you want nine feet, you need more parking spaces.
No, I, we, we are not proposing that. It's our understanding that we don't get an option to voluntarily, we want you to do nine. But if you do ten, we're going to somehow alter your parking. You know, parking in and of itself is also under consideration by the legislature. Either eliminating in totality our ability to regulate parking, much less require more parking. So, I, I don't, we're not on a path to doing that, but we'll certainly keep it in mind.
Kelly, just out of curiosity, do we know why the state did this?
Um, I honestly, I, I do not. I think in other areas, you have smaller vehicles, compact vehicles. And that's, you know, perhaps, some people even have eight-foot wide spaces for their more compact vehicles. So I think nine was, you know, probably in other areas might make sense. Not to say that it can't be done here, it's just not what we're accustomed to.
Change.
We don't think it was some parking lot stripe painter lobbyist group or something like that?
Well, it probably was.
Who knows, maybe.
Do you ever see people like repaving their, or re-striping their parking lots to get more parking spaces in? Or do you think they won't do that?
Um, you know, existing businesses, probably not. If you have one that is trying to do an addition or they're doing some type of remodel. Where they need a few extra spaces and doing the restripe will help, yes, I think they will.
Yeah, get a couple extras.
Yeah, I mean, parking's at a premium. Okay, anybody else have questions? So we need a motion to make this happen? We don't have a choice, so.
Agreed.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
To approve and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, we'll move on to then Ms. Wyatt. I think you're gonna stay up there for the report on Board of Commissioners' action from their August sixth meeting?
Just real quick, not a whole lot to report out on. The text amendment that was filed by T W's outfit, T W Outdoor Outfitters to amend the space that's required between principal and accessory structures from twenty feet to ten feet. That was on consent agenda, so that's gonna be going to public hearing in September. And they did vote to keep our sand relocation and due management cost share money at four hundred thousand, which is ideal. This past year, we did not, I think we were at about two hundred and fifty thousand. We didn't get close to the four hundred. But the way our due management cost share works is it's on a three-year cycle. So this coming year, this coming season, and then the following, those people who took advantage of it the first year, we anticipate will cycle back through. So I think the four hundred thousand will, will be necessary. And that's pretty much it. The only other thing was an update on the Estrein Shoreline Management Plan. Joe Costello gave that. And I'm sure if there's specific questions, he'll be happy to discuss it with the planning board as well. That's all we have.
Kelly, I'm sorry, backing up to that, T W's request in the public hearing coming up in September. That's the same item we talked about at this meeting last month, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I, I'm, now this is a process question. So we said, we recommended against it, but it goes to a public hearing anyway?
It does. So the planning board is an advisory board or a recommending board, so they.
We heard all that today.
Y'all gave your, yep, y'all gave your recommendation for denial. So now the Board of Commissioners will hear it at public hearing and they will certainly take your recommendation into consideration. But as Lauren said, it is not binding. They could certainly do something different with it if they wanted.
Okay, so thank you for clarifying the process there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Was the owner of that still pursuing this amendment? Or did, because did he, did he show up at the meeting, at the Board of Commissioners?
Um, so they haven't had the Board of Commissioners' meeting yet. So that's the, the consent agenda. They don't have to be present for consent agenda. It's just an opportunity for the board to go ahead and schedule the public hearing. So we can get it advertised and get the proper notifications out there. But yeah, ideally, he will be, the applicant will be at the Board of Commissioners' September agenda for this public hearing. I've not had communication with him, but he has reached out to other staff.
Any other questions regarding B O C actions from early August? Town updates, anybody have requested information on town updates? Okay, let's move on to our discussion item. Thank you, Kelly. Move on to our discussion items. And the first one would be continued discussion of strategic plan action, item two point two. As it relates to the examination of allowable uses within the commercial outdoor recreational overlay district, AKA the cord. And Mr. Costello presenting.
Well, thank you. Good morning, planning board. Last month, my computer died, I got a new motherboard in between, so I think we're good for today. Just a quick recap on sort of how we got here. In our strategic plan, one of the items for, for planning department to look at was the incompatibility between basically what our U D O recommends for our commercial outdoor recreation district and what the zone, and then sort of what, what our comprehensive plan is basically recommending and sort of visioning as far as development in the area. Staff reviewed zoning as well as sort of existing plans, existing conditions, existing land use. Site plans that have been approved and put that into a report. And that was sent to the planning board in March. Sort of a comprehensive existing conditions report and then with recommendations on how to amend the U D O to better align with what the comprehensive plan states we want to see from a development perspective in the area. We looked, as well as transportation networks, um, you know, in, in our comprehensive plan, when, when it was developed. You know, the, the multi-use path hadn't fully been built out. That's been built out. We have the Soundside Event Center that has site plan approval and, to my understanding, has been, you know, shopping and, and looking to approve the, the bid package for development there of the entire boardwalk. And so it felt like a good time to kind of look at this more holistically than just from a zoning perspective. We've had conversations, in, in May, we sort of fleshed out a little bit, you know, what are, what are the issues here? And, and what are the opportunities? And, and do, does the report meet what, you know, planning board sees as well from a compatibility perspective? And we sort of narrowed down that, you know, we wanna see better infrastructure. We like these commercial outdoor recreation uses here, but maybe if property owners had some more flexibility to have multiple uses or mixed use. And, and basically liven it up a little bit, have it, have it be an activity node as it's so labeled in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan talks about connectivity between the wellbone activity node and the soundside activity node. Commercial outdoor recreation district sort of overlaps with the soundside activity node, although it does extend over on the causeway. The cord report sort of breaks out those geographic sections and kind of talks about each individual character. As we kind of continued with our discussions into June, it came to, you know, really, we're, we're limited by S B. Those, or, you know, the, the, basically the General Assembly Law that makes it so that we can't remove things that would be considered a down-doning, three eighty-two. And so we looked at, well, how do we kind of add flexibility to the zoning ordinance to allow sort of this diversity of use and a little more interactivity between our sort of premier commercial area and, and the retail there and our outdoor rec uses and then the Soundside Event Center development. And then also, how do we make it a place? You know, it, it's sort of, cord is kind of not, not, you know, very branded term. And talking about things like vegetation and public art and street vendors and, and other things that maybe could bring some more attention and, and development to the area and sort of align with what, what the comprehensive plan says. And so now we're at the stage where I've outlined in my next steps, you know, a couple of things that we sort of talked about last meeting too. We just didn't get it all together, but I think we're getting closer now to, you know, I think Brad offered that we could maybe take like a field trip to the adventure park and be able to have that bird's eye view. I thought that would be a good opportunity between this meeting and the next that we could kind of take in twos or threes or, you know, a non-official meeting group to just look at what, what we're talking about. One of the other things we talked about was public engagement and getting the property owners and the public to, to come in and weigh in on, you know, what, what they, what property owners would want to sort of encourage the, what the development we wanna see. What, what could we do to encourage that and have more open conversation with them? So hopefully we can invite them to the September board meeting. And then having the tourism board potentially present on the progress at the Soundside Event Site and, and hearing, you know, where they're at. I put together this animation, which really it's a model, it's a, it's a sketch-up model that used the G I S layers and then the approved site plans. I just sort of signed up, so it's like a three D design. I think it's helpful because have the opportunity to kind of, you know, it's like you're fixing a car. You, you don't wanna like call someone and talk about like what the rattle is. It's easier to look at it and, and talk about it and, and make tweets and just sort of ingest it that way. So similarly, I thought it would be helpful to just provide a visual. And again, this is sort of like not bound by architectural and, and current U D O requirements, but just hopefully getting the highlights of what we talked about. So I'll push play, this just kind of walks you around the model. And so another one of the things we talked about was scale of buildings and access to the sound on maintaining the visual and access connection to the sound. So here's, you know, again, just a sort of a rendering, if you will, of what a boardwalk could look like as it connects. Maybe, you know, there's an easement there behind the outlets. Maybe the outlets could even be reconfigured and face the sound and take advantage of that view. You know, they, they could maybe even peer out with a little gazebo there. Again, I'm just, you know, this isn't an expectation of, of staff or those property owners or anything like that. But just, just an opportunity to kind of think about this commercial node in town and, and, you know, maybe provide a visual that hopefully reflects what we've talked about. And sort of like a little, little, maybe a little microbrewery could be up there. Maybe a little wedding venue.
Wedding venue, oh nice.
And then, you know, over at the Soundside Event Site, this is actually just traced on top of what that site plan is. So, you know, there's pickleball courts, kind of the adventure park. Having that boardwalk sort of provide some circulation around that event site. I think there's a lot of opportunity. People are gonna be parking at the outlet mall and then they're kind of gonna walk on the multi-use path. And then, you know, it's all, it's all there. Maybe, you know, I, I think it's a, it's a great opportunity now to look at that development and put some public art in there.
There's some art, yeah, I see how that works.
So anyway, that's just a rendering.
I think that's cool, yeah.
Would it?
The animation's cool.
Could or, or maybe, but just really for conversation's sake.
I thank your new motherboard.
Yes.
Good, yeah. Yeah.
No, I think it's great.
Looks good.
The animation's help, very helpful. As would be a visit. Brad, thank you for offering, maybe we'll get that in.
But as far as next steps, I think, you know, we, we sort of have, have hammered down that last meeting that we want more flexibility. We're limited in sort of our, our toolkit on what that can look like. But the planning board, and as I put in the staff report, sort of indicated that all of the proposed sort of alterations to our U D O to allow more flexibility in, in uses were, were pretty well supported. And as well as sort of continuation of this boardwalk development. So really now it's this opportunity to kind of have enough time to invite the public for a larger conversation and, and see what business owners think. I've reached out to some, I've only received positive feedback so far. Happy to answer any questions or engage in discussion. But hopefully next month, we can, in, in my mind, have a presentation from the tourism board on what they're doing, if they're available, and have a more open discussion with, with business owners in the area and hear from them on, you know, where, whether we've, we're right or, or, or what else we should be considering or, or including. And kind of continue to have this discussion about the boardwalk as well.
Are you saying you would have that at this meeting or the commissioners' meeting?
Um, the planning board next month is what I'm thinking. You know, depending on their all, their availability. Hopefully there's enough time now to get it, get them in here. Yep.
I guess I'm wondering if, if there's any plans for, how does this get funded? Or is there any way to, are we thinking about ways to raise money to do it? Or how does it actually come to fruition?
I mean, I think we need property owner support first on at least the, the idea of it and then sort of a willingness to provide an access easement. And then, you know, board and, and public support as, as well. But I think eventually it could, you know, the potential money from, from the tourism board maybe, but also, you know, from grants. Whether that could be a part of grant or maybe even a public access grant for a portion of it. So that would be my initial thoughts on that, although, you know, I haven't really fleshed out the, the funding of, 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 you know, what I've depicted here.
That's like basically the next, that would be the next step after.
Buy-in, right?
Yeah, getting everybody. So you know how they did Jeanette's, how they have the little fish plaques where you, you could fund and then you get the, your name on the board? I don't know, something like that would work for this.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
So this wouldn't be a portion of the, of the town budget, you know, what commonly referred to as parks and paths or whatever? That, that portion of the budget?
Haven't, haven't gotten that far, I guess, you know, but.
Just curious.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I, my initial thought would be that we would try to exhaust and explore grant opportunities, at least for a large portion. And then, you know, potentially there's a match or.
Understood, yeah.
Some sort of, sort of last mile, so to, so to speak. But I, I guess that's what I've, you know, I've been thinking, we would look, look for grant opportunities.
Right. Well, and I, I think it would be great to have the tourist bureau here, if possible, to make a presentation. Because obviously these things would be connected in whatever way, you know, and I think it'd be beneficial for both. That's just off the top of my head, but it would be good to have them here so we could hear what, what they think and, you know. And what, and exactly what they're up to, because I think that bid, they're getting ready to accept a bid, aren't they?
That's my understanding, yeah.
For their boardwalk, yeah, if you will, for that boardwalk. So there's a lot happening down there. It's exciting.
Would it be beneficial to have the town manager involved as well? Or like to have Andy come or not?
Involved in?
Like the meeting next month?
Yeah, I mean, I think if he's available to come, you know, I can certainly ask for Andy to, to come. And, and I mean, I, he's aware of sort of planning board and, and what we've been talking about. But I think, you know, really the, the next step just has to, has to happen as far as engaging business owners and seeing what they think is, is sort of, you know, a non-skipable step.
Right, yeah, definitely.
And then, and the Board of Commissioners has not really considered this topic yet. Like they're, we're kind of doing this now and then after this next meeting, it kind of moves forward to like, for them to think about. Is that how this works?
Yeah, I would think so. I think, you know, kind of engaging the public on it and, and hearing what they say will, will partially drive that next step.
Of course, we're always open to. Of course, we're always open to, to their input, right? Any stage along the way, we're always interested in their guidance.
As we engage the public and the tourist board and commissioners and, and anyone else that we want to engage. I think at the same time, it is helpful if we think this is a great path to go down to generate some enthusiasm and excitement also. And cord does not exactly do that. And I, I don't know, I've thought about this ever since the last meeting. If, if we could somehow work into, as we refer to this area as Soundside at Nax Head. I mean, I can, I've already envisioned a whole marketing thing with, you know, sites, sounds, strolls, sips, snacks, sunsets. Soundside at Nax Head.
You have been thinking about.
Yeah, but just a thought. I mean, we can still call it cord, but then Soundside.
Formerly known as cord. Everybody knows what it means, right? Unless they all start coming down Soundside Road. Yeah, no, I, I agree. I think it would be nice to pretty much sooner than later rebrand it from the cord, right? Or, you know. It's something that's easily recognizable for people and they know what you're talking about and, you know, and where. And I mean, we have the Soundside Event Site. That's the official name for that, right? And so. Anyway, good suggestion.
Soundside sounds like a place you want to go.
Sips, strolls, you know, what else? All kinds of stuff.
Love it.
Sunsets.
I'll make sure to start incorporating that.
Go ahead and rebrand it.
You know, I think we're sort of at the stage where we're kind of right engaging property owners about the boardwalk, but I, I also, you know, I want to hear from them from sort of their perspective on their properties too and, and, you know, it eventually I hope that the text amendment portion of this effort will sort of come forward too. And I think the public engagement piece will really help. Say this is good or, oh, we didn't think about that or add something or remove that. But I think that is something that's, you know, actionable through this board and as we get engaged property owners, whether the, you know, I think the, all of those things are important, but that's something that we can hopefully move through in a, in a more direct line than, you know, with the boardwalk we get, you know, there's easements and then there's support and then there's funding and it, obviously it's a, it's a much longer horizon on, on fruition, basically.
I was wondering why on this step we decided to stop right at Pamlico Jack's site instead of including Darnell's with the, the additional putt putt and the go kart.
I'd say just, just time and, you know, it, I had the, the recent site plan for the Soundside Event Site and I had the outlets site plan. Sort of dig, you know, I didn't want to sort of take a lot of liberty with the free handing and stuff, but it also gets, you know, cumbersome and just wanted to, again, sort of show this idea really. I'm showing ideas and so, you know, I also, I don't know if you noticed, I didn't, you know, build out the like this area, the Speedway and, you know, the Jurassic Putt. I, I kind of threw in a building there. But this is, these white buildings are the only structures that are actually existing. So once you remove, you know, all of the Jurassic Putt and the Speedway area, I guess I, I feel like that tells a story too where, you know, this is sort of a premier commercial corridor and there are outdoor rec uses, but really as far as the scale of structures and development, it's, you know, it's relatively small, I'd say, you know. You know, it, and, and so again, I'm, I'm just trying to show connection to the sound and sort of highlight a lot of the aspects of the report that be recommended, but it's, it's a fair point. I didn't, you know, and, you know, I kind of leave the buildings just sort of square masses. I didn't build out the shingles and the windows and the doors. And the roof structures and all of that too. It just gets, uh, I'm more trying to just kind of show an idea.
Well, I was just curious because you could, if you just added Darnell to the conversation, then he would, you know, he could add a lot of more boardwalk to what we already have with just one more person input or involvement.
You, like you said, we need his buy-in for the whole project too, like.
We don't need it, but I'm just saying. I think he would be into it. I mean, you don't want to leave him stranded out there on the edge.
Yeah, this is where it is time to engage people officially, right? Because rather than us kind of bantering it about in a public meeting, right? I mean, you're fine. It's a good question. But it is, it's time, I think. I think you have a good suggestion, staff does, to move forward. So right now it's conversation, conversation pretty much and then we're thinking like invite them to our planning board meeting?
Yeah, I think, you know, now I kind of have enough lead time. It was, you know, I, I didn't, I didn't, uh, we, we, you know, my last staff report, I said this meeting, but just the way that the month went, I think, you know, I can now sort of send those in by sort of hopefully this week and give people enough opportunity to.
To show up and then it might be possible. If it's not good for, you know, sometimes if people just can't make a meeting, then you, then you don't make any progress, you know. Is there any way to, I guess there's not that many to just sort of correspond with them officially with a couple of simple questions, almost like, for lack of a better word, almost like a survey or a I mean, I know then it's, you know, it's in writing, but we'll see if, you know, we'll see if they can come, if they want to come, you know.
That's what I think. I mean, I think having, having people here for a conversation would be best and, and hopefully having the tourism board, you know, to sort of report in on real progress would, would be a benefit to the planning board and to everyone who owns property along the corridor and it can kind of be like a Soundside, uh, Soundside of Nax Head conversation.
Bradley, Brad's comment, um, I do feel like, I know it takes a long time to make this, but like, I do feel like if we're going to bring people in to have the conversation, like it would be nice to have, like we have the adventure site on there, it'd be nice to kind of show like the, the other recreational aspects that are there. I mean, if, I don't know how much time you have to do it, but if, if we saw the other putt putt courses and the speed and spray or whatever it's called, like track. And especially if we're inviting them to come here, like I think they would like to see their business on there.
That's a good point.
Get busy, Joe.
At the meeting, then I feel like they should have their.
I think maybe we should just get you another computer, just.
Or a helper.
We know you love it, Joe.
But then it'll be it won't have the cool water in the class.
Yeah, we want that. We like the clouds.
Within reason, but you see what I'm saying? Like if they're here.
It's really cool. I bet it's, it is very cool. Joe, just roughly how much time did that part take you?
Well, it takes a lot of time to render. That's the thing. So you make tweaks, like once I designed, you know, I don't know, maybe like a week to draw everything. You know, it's multiple sites and trying to make it accurate, but what takes a long time is once you kind of tell it to render, these are all just sort of scenes from this model and it adds like all these special effects through V-Ray was the renderer I used. It just takes a long time to render is the thing. So you make a tweak and you got it sent there for like a couple days. You don't really know what you did and, you know.
Okay, well, maybe we just look at the reference map.
We appreciate you doing this much a lot.
It really gives a great idea.
Yeah, I hadn't used the whole rendering thing, you know, and it'd be easy enough to, to do it and just show you in like the model, but once you get the render and it's also a software that I used on a free trial.
Do we have any volunteers that want to get a free trial?
How many, how many different logins have you had to use to get this?
Maybe just say, imagine what's already there.
So how, is anybody else still feeling like they'd want to go to onsite and look at it or especially what Brad's offered, like, you know, go up the tower and look? It's helpful to me. I mean, this is helpful, but I think there's nothing like really being right onsite. So we can still.
So I'll look to follow up and, you know, reach out to all of you on maybe a good day that we can kind of go in stages and.
It shouldn't take long, right?
And follow up with the tourism board as well as property owners and hopefully know soon whether we'll have good enough attendance for, for what we're hoping for next month.
We might have a few light days soon here.
Do you have a representative from the, uh, the outlets that?
Yeah, we've reached out to them and just made sure, you know, they're aware of the boardwalk. I sent them this. They, you know, they were sort of supportive of the boardwalk idea anyway.
They live in Nax Head or? So they probably won't make the meeting or do you think they'll, they'll send somebody?
I'm not, you know, I'm not sure. I know they have a property manager here, but I'll send the invite. They have commented on, you know, this and sort of our the boardwalk anyway and said they, they've thought about that and are supportive. I know they're relatively new owners of, of it, so.
Can certainly watch the meeting at least and weigh in. Is that an official question?
It's a relative term.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, anybody, Joe, do you have anything specific you need from us that we haven't covered?
No, just wanted to follow up with this from the last meeting and sort of kind of let you know, you know, that everything that I included for, in last month's staff report, I still plan on sort of bringing forth and I, I think that's an important next piece. We kind of have to now sort of engage with the public and see and then based on what they say what people feel about this. Sort of be able to regroup on maybe more specific text amendments that then we can start bringing forward and then, you know, maybe just present this idea to the board of commissioners at some point as well and, and get their direct feedback.
Perfect. Okay.
Sounds great.
Yeah, thank you very much. We appreciate it. So we will now move on, I guess. Kelly, you're back up for your planning and development director's report. Is there anything that we didn't cover?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, maybe I can run through it quickly with you guys.
Please.
So, um, the septic advisory committee, um, which Basil sets on that on behalf of the planning board, they met on July thirtieth and we pretty much finished up our conversations related to the division of water infrastructure, um, no interest loan that we want to offer people to have their septic systems repaired if needed. So provided a presentation on this previously, but just as a reminder, it's, um, five hundred thousand dollars that we have an opportunity to distribute to people with failing septic systems. Our current program is low interest. This would be no interest and we have created a mechanism to identify the properties that we consider high risk, that we're really going to try to proactively push this program towards and that's going to be properties primarily that are adjacent to water bodies, marshy areas and have an elevation lower than three feet because those are the areas that are probably experiencing high groundwater and may have some septic issues. So the SHAC, the Septic Help Advisory Committee was really helpful in preparing a path forward that we can pre-qualify our contractors for Davis Bacon prevailing wage requirements to ensure that they're meeting those as well as making sure that they meet the requirements for the American Iron and Steel Act. So now that we have all of this together, um, we can send this back to DWI and get their approval. Make sure they're happy with everything that we're doing and willing to still provide us the money before we start advertising that. So that's a, a big step that we're moving towards. The Eshrin Shoreline Management Plan, Joe gave a great update to the board of commissioners on that. The, the short of that is that the consultants have finished up a lot of their geotechnical work and modeling. So on August or, yeah, August seventh, we had a couple of meetings here within the town. We had a stakeholders meeting where everybody that was part of the original Eshrin Shoreline Management Plan, as well as the property owners that are adjacent to those two sites, Villa Dunes Drive, Old Nax Head Woods Road and Soundside Road, they could come and learn about what the consultants have accomplished thus far and ideas for measures that we're considering adjacent to their properties. Um, there were some onsite meetings as well. I guess where we're at right now, there seems to be support for providing, um, some living shoreline measures adjacent to Villa Dunes Drive and Old Nax Head Woods Road. What was proposed along Soundside Road, we need to take a little break and, and revisit that. We need to have some more conversations with that. So it's ongoing, a little bit of progress, slow moving, but ongoing. Updated y'all on the Dune Management Cost Share Program, um, Hargrove Street. We've applied for a grant to do some improvements there, so we're hoping to hear back on that late September. The Dark Skies Bright Stars Initiative, um, won't go into a whole lot of detail because Chris actually came here not too long ago and updated the board with what he's doing there. Um, but we have had a lot of success collaborating with Nest to get the word out about lights out for sea turtles. We've had some cleans made. Uh, there's a photo of that in your packet. So just moving forward with that, Doughty Park Events, I guess here to highlight. Because of Erin coming in, our Wednesday evening concert has been canceled. Hoping to reschedule that and then our last farmer's market, which was scheduled for Thursday, obviously that's a no-go. But Paige is scrambling to reschedule that to actually Wednesday, tomorrow Wednesday.
That's what I saw. I thought that's definite, right?
Yes, so not, we may not have the same number of vendors and things like that. Nax Head Elementary School, it's a teacher workday. So we're not going to have their parking lot unfortunately, so.
Park at the Y.
Yes, but, um, we didn't want to lose our last market. We wanted to salvage something, so, um, that's actually going to be tomorrow. And, um, yeah, that's really all I have. I did want to show these photos of a, a diorama that Chris Trembleer Planner has put together for Dark Skies Bright Stars. It was really cool. And this is a copy of the clean that's being distributed to all the oceanfront property owners to remind them to turn their lights out. Kind of dorky, I know, but we also have little green sea turtle stickers.
I think it's cute.
So, um, essentially our staff or Nest staff or the rental management companies, if they will agree to do so. We want them to go in and identify the outlets, the switches that relate to an outdoor light because if you're a visitor and you're coming in, probably see a wall of switches and you have no idea which one goes to that bright light out by the pool. Um, but if you can take this little green sticker, pop that on there, that way you know that's an important light switch. And yeah, just to highlight some of the stuff we've been doing at Doughty Park, our part-time seasonal person that we had, Emma Ortega, really allowed all of our events to be just top-notch. She was wonderful. She helped Paige out so much. She's, uh, an upcoming senior at, I think, ECU. She's an upcoming senior at, I think, ECU. So she's had to go back, so we don't have her anymore, unfortunately. But I just wanted to give her a shout out and appreciate all that she did. So that's all I have, if you have any questions.
Anybody have questions for Kelly on her report? Thank you.
Thank you.
How about board members' agenda? Anybody have anything? Okay.
Not at this time.
Okay, hearing none, then I'll move on. I have nothing on my chairperson's agenda today, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Okay, in a second, and we are adjourned. About at the beginning, I'm always so distracted by this region, I never think about the gavel. I'm like, why do we need a gavel?